Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with one amendment. After talking to Treasurer Ike Meyer, I asked to remove the resolution to cancel the outstanding warrants.
No.
Or...
The tax abatement.
Excuse me. Remove the resolution for tax abatement, I'm sorry. I just made the wrong slasher.
Okay, I will second that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 16th, 2019, and September 18th, 2019 is presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims of payment, presented as presented, dated September 25th, 2019.
And I will second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Utility permits and secondary roads.
I am almost caught up with our paperwork on rock going, but we have eclipsed 2.1 million this year. Yeah, that's about double what we would normally do in a year. So, just so you guys got a little update on how far over we are.
Okay. Alright, anything else?
Not really.
Okay.
Rained out last week, so we didn't get a lot done.
Right. And made the roads soggy again, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's not all bad though, because then the rock we put on, because it's getting close, that gets to a time here you don't want to put rock down, because it won't get worked in and you'll just throw it off in the winter, so...
Right, okay.
A little rain here and there is pretty good for us.
Okay.
Here and there.
Good. Nothing like southwest Iowa.
Yeah, or last September.
Right, yeah. Okay, Taylor Nideroff and Corey DeBerg.
Corey stopped me on my way in. Taylor's on his way, he's running a little bit late, so I'd ask that we just skip this for the time being and revisit it towards the end of the agenda, Renee.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, we have the agreement between the county, between Hardin County and Elaine Ferrex. Daryl wasn't sure if he was going to make it today or not. This is an agreement regarding a... An existing easement, easement that the county has for conservation purposes. The fire hydrant or the water hydrant. Do you have any comments regarding this at all? Have you seen the...
No, I've not seen this, I'm only up to date on what's transpired.
Yeah.
Do you want to review this beforehand? Well, there's Elaine.
Hi Elaine, come on down.
Me? Okay.
Absolutely, how are you?
We're just discussing, just brought this up.
Good to see you this morning.
Good to see you.
How are you?
Good. The only question I have about what we agreed on is what does the fire department think I'm blocking? They said that, oh, this is my taxes.
Oh.
Had to do them today too. They said I have some obstacles in their way or whatever.
I don't know.
They referenced maybe the gates and stuff, maybe.
Oh, and that little gate is just tied? And I can move it, so they can...
I haven't talked to them, so I'm not sure what...
The one logistical thing would be in the winter, if there's blowing and drifting snow that could bury that gate, it might be hard to move, so...
Wes, that's kind of what I want to talk to you about too, because you're going to put my signage up for me?
I haven't been into the, I haven't seen what you guys have worked out yet, so I'm behind the ball here.
Okay.
I have to get caught up with what you guys decided, so...
And if we, if we want, we can kind of delay this and see if Daryl has the opportunity to make it to the meeting.
He's in a deposition this morning, so he was going to try to come over, so we can move forward and come back to this.
I think I like everything we're doing.
Okay.
And if you don't know about the signage, so...
Yeah, I'm not sure much for the fire.
That's the only reason why I really want to keep my gate back up yet.
Okay.
Because if the, if, I'm sorry, people don't know how to read. And, I'm sorry, but that's the only reason why I would keep that gate there.
And I don't know about the fire department, what they're, I just assume the gate, I'm not sure what they're referencing for lock gates.
Alright, if you want to just review that, in the meantime, I think we'll go ahead and postpone this just for a little bit.
Can we?
Yeah, this meeting, I mean, we'll come back to it if Daryl is, is available, if he can come in.
Because like I said, I agree with everything.
Okay.
Okay.
But I just don't understand what the fire department thinks I'm blocking for them or whatever, because that, that gate I have there, and I didn't know how they, they said they were going to maintain it, and I don't know what that means.
Maintain the well, or the, the...
Dry hydrant.
The dry hydrant.
Yeah, the approach to, evidently.
I don't know. County attorney would know that, so unless, I mean, if it's in there, if it's, Wes can read that too and see if that's in there, and if it's in there, then that's in the agreement.
And I'm just curious to see what they mean, because supposedly they've maintained this all these years, Renee. If my lawnmower, my skid loader, my sprayer, I could, I would have brought them in today, because I've been the one that maintained it. Because it's the end of my driveway. You know, I tried to keep the weeds mowed, sprayed, and if the river brought me a log, I took my skid loader down there, you know, just so I can keep it maintained.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Alright, well, if you can hold on for a bit, we'll wait and see if Daryl has the opportunity to come in.
Okay, I got to pay my taxes and I got another appointment, so I'll stop back.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we're only going to be probably...
Ten minutes.
Maybe ten minutes or so. So if you want to run up and pay your taxes or whatever, get that done.
Okay.
And then check back.
Okay.
Alright.
Thanks Elaine.
Like I said, everything else I agree on, but it's perfect.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, the resolution to cancel outstanding warrants.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution to cancel outstanding warrants as presented.
I will second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
We have two roll calls.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, roll call Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
And Lance is in present.
Correct. Alright. Resolution to publish notice of letting of lease of agricultural land.
I admit, yeah, go ahead.
This is just the, the usual notice that we're going to publish in the paper notifying land or farmers that we will be renting out the Hardin County farm ground, so it's just a notice that will be published in the paper. And this will be the county home farm and conservation ground. Okay.
I would make a motion to, to publish notice of letting for the lease of agricultural land with one amendment, Mindy. On page two, paragraph two, since we will be having county employee training on October 8th, strike 4:00 PM and put 12 noon.
Alright. Okay, so I will second that. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Renee?
Aye.
BJ?
Aye.
And Lance is not present.
Okay, change of status in the sheriff's office.
I will make a motion to approve the change of status for Amy Robb. She's a full-time communications officer. She's being promoted from part-time to full-time at a wage of $16.76 per hour, effective September 21st, 2019.
Okay, I will second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Application for use of courthouse grounds.
I will make a motion to approve the application for courthouse grounds for the Hardin County life chain on October 6th from 2:15 to 3:45 PM.
Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, review of Marshall Hardin County Public Environment slash Health or Planning and Zoning Administrator Agreement. This is the agreement that was signed between Hardin County and Marshall County, contracting the services of the environmental health person here that is employed by Hardin County to be doing some temporary work in Marshall County. I spoke with Daryl regarding this, and he, we will not take any action today, but he just wanted to make sure that we keep this in the forefront, because this does expire in August, I believe. Or, I mean, October 13th.
Hey Renee?
Yes.
Because there is no board meeting on October 2nd, Angela just wanted me to let you know that October 9th is too late to table it for proper notices.
Okay.
She wanted me, she said, just to make sure that you knew that.
Okay.
And I'll see Supervisor Patton tomorrow at a meeting, and I'll get an update and let Lance or Renee know where they're at in the process, and maybe if we need to have a special meeting to address this, we can, but I'll talk to Supervisor Patton tomorrow.
Okay, alright. Alright. Okay, and Taylor has not been able to make it yet. What?
Okay, yeah, and Lance will be here then as well.
Yeah, he'll be here then too, and that won't be until the 9th of October. Unless we call a special meeting. Okay, alright, mhm. And then the agreement with Elaine. Do you, or do we just want to recess for a bit? I mean, do you think Taylor would be on his way? Okay. Oh, there he is right there.
Hi Taylor.
Just in the nick of time. Alright. So if you have, if you want to present.
You're up.
Yes, yes.
Walk right in, work.
Alright, so I'm going to give Corey DeBerg...
You want to come up front?
Yep, up to the podium please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Corey's going to give you kind of a brief overview of the business he's starting in Hardin County, which I'm sure people know about already, so I'll let him first kind of give you a detailed outline of what he's proposing to build.
So my brother and I are going into business together, my younger brother, and we are starting a company called Timber's Edge Wedding and Event Center. What it is, is going to be kind of, we've noticed there are, there's a big trend on more the rural barn, machine shut kind of weddings, and we realized that Hardin County doesn't have one of those yet, so we are going to launch that, hopefully start construction here in October, and have weddings available starting in April already. The main logistics of it is it'll be licensed for 299 people inside, and with a large outdoor patio, we'll be able to hold up to an over 500 people. Located by the Sack and Fox overlook, so you guys know where Sack and Fox is, it's on the county highway S-56. We will be located in one of our farm fields that we currently farm, a little bit to the north of Sack and Fox. Roughly from a size standpoint, it's 7,200 square feet with a balcony. It's mostly just one floor, but then there is a balcony on the second floor for the bride and groom suite. This will be a little bit different venue than what you typically think of for a wedding venue. It'll be very, it's all-inclusive, so we provide everything that day, including a wedding coordinator, decoration, transportation, all that. We're looking right now for a property tax revenue increase of roughly $18,000 for the county when it's all developed. Looking at 20 part-time jobs, wouldn't all be full-time. Those are going to be the service crew, the staff, bartenders, wedding coordinators. Again, those aren't full-time jobs, those are part-time jobs, with a payroll around $150,000 a year once we get established and going. That may be a day one, obviously, be in a couple of years. Looking for the first year of about 22 weddings that we'll be holding, that's kind of our goal. If we average our guest list, we're looking at 7,700 people coming to Hardin County. Kind of a goal then, in three or four years would be 60 weddings per year, which would then have about 21,000 visitors to Hardin County. That kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at for a facility.
So from the legal side of this, essentially what we're proposing is some type of business development agreement. You basically have increased tourism, which, because I do city law, normally there's grants available through like a hotel motel type board. I don't think Hardin County has a tourism hotel motel subcommittee. 22 weddings per year, thousands of people coming in. We have 20 part-time jobs, which is some job creation. New construction, you're adding a commercial, essentially building, commercial function on the tax rolls, which if I ballparked it with comps, were 18,000 is close. Obviously, we won't know until the final assessment would come out. Generally, that qualifies you for like TIF funding, so there's potential for rural water. I believe that runs in one of those ditches. So rural water, utilities, I'll be honest, I don't exactly know all the TIF details, because anytime I deal with TIF, there's a guy in Des Moines that does that, and it's a lot easier. But we'd basically like to start exploring a, some type of development agreement. TIF revolving loan fund, if you have one. Talked to Angela a little bit, I don't think you have one set up.
Not technically.
If you read the Iowa false paper, they do have one, it's been in the paper. Basically, sub-time interest rate as seed money, pay it back over a term of years. We'd also like a tax abatement, which I think is relatively standard. Essentially where, so what we're looking for is permission to start exploring this with the county.
Yeah, we would also have to get our attorney...
Sure.
That we would use, because the end of TIF I know is from the bookkeeping end in the auditor's office, and what's available now is probably, possibly changed since I was there, so... And we do have an attorney that we would work with with this also, so we would have to...
Is it the same guy in Des Moines?
It could be.
There's not many of them.
No.
So we would like to start exploring some type of development agreement with the county, because just through the tourism side, there will be more people from out of town that fills your hotels, gas, food, it helps the county.
And I know that you guys have spoken with Taylor and Wes, Jessica, and Angela, correct? And so I know that they had some concerns that those things, I mean, it sounds like you were willing to look into all those things and, and take care of those, so I appreciate you going through that path and, and getting as much information as you can. Yeah, I think we definitely can ask Angela to continue to work on something and find out, you know, best practices, what's worked elsewhere, and if you want to do your due diligence as well and bring back any ideas. Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with bringing something back for formal presentation. Angela's very knowledgeable, and what we did in Radcliffe with the Legion building might be something to explore as well. So, since my time on the board, we haven't had many situations like this, so this is something new and unique. It's not a factory, it's not, you know, one of those other instances, so I'm very intrigued and, you know, appreciate your entrepreneurial spirit, Corey. And so I'd look forward to getting more information and continuing down the road.
And then also the liquor license permitting, I can't find the Hardin County requirements...
Okay.
To obtain a liquor license. Generally, it's done through municipality.
Right, but unincorporated.
You're in an unincorporated area. I don't know if you have the formal procedure for that. Generally, a certain set of individuals, whether it's police chief, fire department, to make sure it's in compliance with code, they inspect it and sign off. I don't know what the county's procedure, if you have one.
Okay.
But that's something we'd also like to get.
Could I have you follow up with Attorney Meyer on that?
Or Mindy handles those two.
I take care of the liquor licenses. It's all through the state. You go through the state completely, then they send it to us when you've done what you have to have done, then present it to the board for approval, but the entire thing, the requirements, everything, you go through the state of Iowa, through...
Iowa, alcohol beverages division.
You have the application forms up there, don't you?
I do not, it's all online.
It's all through them?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I know, I spoke briefly with Daryl about this too. I don't know, Daryl, did you have any comments regarding, regarding this or not? Or just get our attorneys in?
I just got here a few minutes ago halfway, I don't know how far into the presentation you were, but if, Taylor, if you could just maybe send me an email with some of these...
Okay. Yep.
Deal points that you're interested in exploring, that'd be great.
And then do you usually do your own development agreement type document? Do you want me to put one together as a proposal? I have several forms for them.
I would like...
I'm guessing we would need to contact our, probably our attorney that we dealt with in the past, if there's like a TIF or urban renewal or something that's set up. But I would say whatever you can submit to Daryl at this point, and we'll, we'll work through Daryl, and then I will defer to him as far as when we would need to get our other attorney involved.
Okay.
So...
That's fine, we just kind of wanted to information on course of heading meeting.
Right.
Right, to get, get something started here. Okay. Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Alright. Daryl, we also kind of had brought up the agreement between the county and Elaine Ferrex, but Elaine had a couple of questions, and she's back in the room now, so if...
Oh, leave that open.
You can leave it open.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, please.
The only have questions on is the fire department. Which obstacles do I have to move for them, and what do they mean by maintenance? I, I know the fire department said they maintained it, but I know my skid loader, my lawnmower, and my trimmer and my sprayer, if they could testify for me today, they know I've done it all these years. So that's the only question I have. Everything I, I told Wes, I just kind of like to see what. I will take that gate down. If I find out the conservation puts their signs up, I don't care then, as long as I know the conservation has their signs up, and my canoers know how to read them. You know, that's the only questions I have.
Obstacles, what obstacles are you...
Well, that's what I don't understand. They say I'm obstructing their, their approach.
I assumed it was the gates. Well, there could be, could be the gate, just anything that's going to obstruct their access to that approach, that's the main thing.
Well, and that thing is only wired in two places, and I can move it. And until I find out if the conservation puts up their signs, that I know my canoers aren't going to go back in there again, you know, that's the only reason I have the gate up yet. Otherwise, they can, they can move it easy. And I just want to know what they meant by maintaining it, because like I said, I've been doing it, and if they still want me to do it, then I, I will. You know, but they said supposedly they did it, and I, I've been doing it, so...
Are they talking about maintaining the access or maintaining the hydrant?
The access, I think.
Anything that they're going to need to get to, get to the hydrant.
It'd be just like me. We don't expect people to maintain the ditch, but they mow it, you know? I think it'd be that kind of general thing. If she wants to go do it, it's her land, but otherwise, it's ultimately their responsibility if they need to get down there.
Because it's their easement, I'll give them back. And it's in my driveway, so it does, looks pretty icky if we don't keep it up, you know? I know I don't even keep my lawnmower the best, you know, but that's the only questions I had.
I think maybe just one way to look at what the level of maintenance is going to be so that that approach and that hydrant are functional to emergency needs.
Yeah.
It's not going to probably win any beauty contests, but it's going to be maintained, so it's functional. There's weeds growing up, you know, and the county is going to be maintaining that ditch just like they do any other ditch. Maintenance is primarily, primarily to make it functional for emergency access.
Well, then I guess I'll just let the weeds grow then, if that's the way they want it, because of... Yeah, like I said, I've done it all these years. And if they can walk through the weeds and get down to their hydrant, it's their easement now, because you're going to give me my land back. It's going to be easement to them, so then it should be up to them to, if they want to keep it clean and nice and whatever, you know, if the river comes out on them, logs get in there, it's their responsibility, not mine anymore. Right?
It isn't now. There's currently an easement on it now too.
Yeah, I know.
So it's not your responsibility, you're just doing it to do it.
I have been.
Yeah, just like a lot of people take care of their ditches.
Because it's the end of my driveway.
Everybody's driveway is, it ditches at the end of their driveway.
I think the biggest thing they're probably concerned about, I shouldn't probably be speaking for the fire department, is that, you know, if we have heavy rains and the driveway would get gutted, rutted, or washed out, where they couldn't get down there, is probably what they're referring to for maintenance as well, I'm assuming.
That should be their job to keep track of that, though.
It should be, because according to our abstracts, it's, and their easement, you know, you're going to give me my land back, but I'm going to give an easement, so it should be up to them to maintain the end of my driveway too then, to, to get in and out there. That should be my responsibility.
Just like any other driveway that goes across the county's easement, it's not going to be any different. I think that, Taylor, you correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Yeah.
Homeowners' responsibility, is that not it?
Somewhat. It's a, it's a gray area.
You're not in law school.
Generally, what I tell, so our priority starts in the middle of the road and goes out. You know, if we have a hole in the middle of the road or a hole in somebody's driveway, obviously the driveway is less of a concern. So I think it'd be kind of the same thing for them, you know? You know, like is it just a little bit of rock missing? Is half the driveway gone? I don't think they would 100% maintain their driveway. I think it would depend on the situation.
Well, then, another question I have is, why don't they move their, their driveway to the dry hydrant, into your easement, the county easement?
I don't know if that's possible with the lay of the land. I mean, you saw that, you saw that ravine that's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Well, I'm trying to get a fire truck in there, they probably need so much room to get a fire truck in there.
Exactly.
These aren't pickups, these are the tankers, you know, that...
It would be easier to have two separate driveways, but I believe in the past you did not want the two separate driveways.
Where would the other one be?
It would be building you a new one further to the west.
Okay. You're going to do it?
I was told that was off the table, so I don't know.
Because I offered to do that.
I heard the opposite, so I do not know.
I think it's clear that there's really no agreement at this point in time yet. Is... Do we need to just table this?
As it was written and as it was modified at your request, are you prepared to enter that agreement or not?
Well, as long as I know what the, I would like to really know what the fire department really needs from me. That's the only thing I'm asking.
I would assume the gate should be gone. That's not a lot of distance. You're talking about turning a fire truck 90 degrees. They need a pretty wide space, and I don't know if there's enough space between those gates.
The fire department never came back down to look at that with me, to see if that driveway, their approach, because that was just an approach for moving the bridge. It was never made for the fire department. It never was. And now with this bigger equipment, so I don't know if they're going to ask more of me, you know, if they're going to need more of my land so they can do this. So can we table it first? Let the fire department come out with me?
Sure.
And Wes, I want to see what kind of signs you want to put up with me? If that's okay?
Sure.
Because that's the only questions I have.
Okay.
But the fire department and us have never gotten back together, so I have no idea what they want from me.
No, I think that's fair. No, I think that's fair.
I have, I have a question for her.
Sure.
Are canoeers still going to?
No.
Use that driveway then to canoe or not?
No.
So it's just going to be used for?
Fire department and county.
Emergency zone like.
Yep.
So is her land, is her driveway then going to be, is her driveway a long driveway then?
Up to her house, yes.
So is the county, so can the county, instead of making two driveways, could the county just maintain her driveway? Wouldn't that be cheaper, since the county's going to use the, the wa, the fire hydrant?
That's not the county, that's the city, that's the Steamboat Rock Township Fire Department. Yes, township, not city.
Oh, okay, Steamboat Rock, okay.
Right.
I thought it was out in the county.
Nope. Well, it is in the rural, her property is in the rural area, but it's the Steamboat Rock Fire Department that if they're in that area, or possibly any other fire department, I mean, if it's a huge fire, you could have multiple fire departments there that would possibly need water.
Which is why the agreement is going to be between the county, and then the county will have the authority to authorize any emergency agency to utilize that approach and the hydrant.
And I agree with that.
And how's this?
So I don't want to stick it all on Steamboat, just because they're probably the nearest, and it's assumed that that'll be used by them more than anything.
Well, and if we have a river rescue or something.
It would be an ambulance possibly, too.
We talked about fire, but if we've got a situation on the river where there's a possible drowning, or there needs to be a rescue.
Or, and if, a couple of years ago, they came and cleaned out the river.
Yeah.
I let them use that for that, they had a porta potty, they used my lawn for their, because it's a nice shady day. I let them use my lawn for that too, you know, for the cleanup aspect of it too. I have no objections to that. Because that was really nice, because all they did, I couldn't believe those poor people, the river was so low, and they took their canoes down, they walked, they floated down first, and then they had to walk it back up. What stuff they found, it was amazing. And no, stuff like that, Wes, I don't, you know, I have no objections.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to table the agreement between the county and Ms. Ferrericks until a later date.
Okay, I'll second it. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Do you guys agree with me that we can wait?
Yep.
Is anything else I need to know from you guys?
Now, we probably have to keep talking.
Yeah, and I would just ask for something in writing from the Steamboat Rock Fire Department, what their expectations are.
Please. And Wes, you and I know each other, and you, you didn't even know about the signage until the day.
No. So I need to get caught up here.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And any questions for me, guys? Use my home phone, that's 858-5010.
5010?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because my cellphone and I aren't working right now.
Okay.
Thank you for your time this morning.
Well, thank you.
You bet.
I appreciate this.
All right. Okay, are there any public comments? If not, is there any other business?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.